It's a minor change, but they wanted to have that page. Hear that Dan? Oh, address on the front page was a request by my own thing.
Just so you can easily identify it.
Address from the coverage.
Yeah.
I just, I just placed those out.
No, this is mine. This is me. No, this is my stuff. Thank you. Well, that answers that question.
My house is on fire. You know which one it is. You all have an excuse.
Would you want to help out everybody? You said this is an updated drawing. What was updated?
Yes, just a little. Yeah, there's a, there's just that comment note in the, in the red bubble there.
Okay.
Was, that was changed. And Dan, when we get to that portion of the discussion, Dan will comment on it.
To remain as opposed to be.
That's correct. Oh, John's.
John.
Was it? Yeah. But when we were, when I printed up.
We're closing up.
Sure. All right, 5:30. So Kristen McDonald, the Chair of the meeting, isn't able to attend tonight. So we will just have to, the Board will make a decision of who will be the Acting Chair for tonight. John is the only one, I think, ineligible because he is the Council Representative. So anybody else could be the Chair acting tonight if somebody would like to make a recommendation.
Bob, would you just do it? Let him do it, please.
Does that work for you?
Yeah.
Consensus? Everybody's good with that?
Yeah.
All right. Do you have any to take a roll?
I do.
I'll take the roll then. Sue Stewart.
Here.
John Leo.
Here.
Bob Thoma.
Here.
Maddy Hines.
Here.
And Kathy Montal.
Here.
All right, we have a corner. We have five.
All right. Thank you all for being here. And. Minutes?
Do we have the minutes?
Yep, I don't, I don't know who has them or who reads them, I'm sorry.
They were part of the package that went out and I read them.
All right, so everybody read them.
I thought they were accurate, so I would make a motion to approve. Second?
Second.
Sue, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pass.
Okay, public comment correspondents. We've got a couple of letters here.
And if at this point in time, if I can add something to the agenda that wasn't there. We did receive a letter from Tom Borgman. And for anybody that was on the zoning board last year. We approved at the June meeting a variance request for his property at 582 Elm Street. And he's provided this email that I included here. Due to complications with finding a construction company and whatnot with COVID and everything. They were not able to start their project yet. The way that the zoning, zoning variances work in Harbor, when we grant them. You have a one-year timeframe to start construction of your project. If you have not done that, your, your variance request lapses. We do have the opportunity, if the Board would like, to grant a one-year extension. And your, your choice tonight could be to grant him that extension for his project. Or if you feel that it's appropriate, you could require that he come back for a new variance request.
Can I?
Would you prefer now to add this to the agenda?
Oh, yes. So if we could add this to the agenda as item.
C.
C. Okay. That work for you? Makes sense?
Sure.
So you go to first.
Yeah, does the, if, does a one-year extension mean it has to start within the year or finish within?
Start.
Start within the year.
They, they had to start construction and what we have taken that to mean is that they should have their building permits pulled. And there should be some activity started onsite. They don't have to be finished, but they should at least, let's say, they've started digging for the foundation or they've started framing in or something along that line. To show that progress is being made on the, on the project.
Okay. Any comment from the audience about this? Anybody here for this particular issue? Nope? Okay.
I make the motion that we accept this and give them a, give them permission to go ahead.
Yes.
When you're.
Let's add it to the agenda.
Yes.
Okay, let.
Oh, we're, it's on the agenda further down? Yep.
Let's, let's add it to the agenda as item C. How about a motion for that?
Okay.
I move that we add to the agenda, item C, consideration of a one-year extension for Mr. Borgman's.
Second.
Variance.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes.
All right. Okay. Dimensional variance request for 11 each drive. Comments from the Board? Let me just do it. Everybody been down there to, to see this situation and looking over there?
Yeah, boards look kind of rotten.
If he doesn't fix it, it's gonna fall down.
Jeff, do you want to give us an overview, just to make sure we're on the same page?
Yep, I'm just.
Literally?
Grabbing the right one here. Dan came in and we've discussed this internally here at the office a couple of times. This is, we, and we've seen requests similar to this in the past. And typically, they haven't been too big of a conversation case. We'll see how tonight goes. So there, they have a two-story home with a one-story addition on the back of it. And then a carport behind that. And they're requesting to add a second-story addition over the first floor. And there's that, if you look at the, I think it's the third page of their application. It shows the area in orange. That is the specific area that does not comply with the setback requirement. The setbacks in this area are in, in the zoning district are 15 feet. And that's the portion that would extend into that area. And this is, again, the, the first floor is already existing and it's in existing non-conformity. That's, that's fine. The zoning code just says that they cannot worsen any non-conformity. And that's why they're here for a variance request for the second floor addition.
Now, the second floor addition would match the footprint of the first floor.
That's correct.
So how does this create the incremental non-conformity? Is it because of the nominal increase in the livable space?
So the way that we've looked at the wording in our zoning code. Is that we look at the, not just the footprint of the structure, but the whole wire mesh, the, the volume as well.
Volume.
Right? So because we are increasing the, we would be increasing the non-conformity. It didn't exist prior to 1990, so it's not a non-conformity. It would be a violation. And, and we have, we have in the past talked about some other communities only look at a footprint. And if it's just going up to a second floor, they do not require a variance request. We've talked about that before. We felt that we still wanted to have this conversation to take into consideration the nuances of each property in making those decisions. So we have not changed our zoning code in that way. And Dan, you can probably talk about the property and what the property owner would like and why?
Yeah, the, the, how the back condition is falling apart. It will be removed and rebuilt. But obviously, we're gonna be conforming in, in the way that we rebuild it. It's just the particular area in that second floor. We're increasing, we're creating a vertical situation that isn't existing, that we need to get there in support. The carport is in disarray, but it's just gonna be stabilized, probably the best way. They're just gonna fix that up. So that's what we're looking at. It's a multi-family owned cottage. They've had it for a long time. And it's time for some help.
And this is the first time that I remember seeing a drawing that shows the week we tonsing setback requirements in addition to the city's.
Yeah.
It's, it's interesting.
Well, it is. This is probably more from a Little Traverse Township perspective because everything that they do down there, that's in the week we is, they're all dimensional request variances. Yet, weekly requires only a five, five-foot foundation and no more than a four-foot drip line down there. So that's, I put that in there and it's, it's basically on the narrow lots. It's not all running down beach. I think I counted them. There are like five of them there that actually would be affected by that. If we were building, if we were tearing them down, building new, I would probably see you guys to start going more towards what we require, requires or suggest for us to be right.
So do I understand that, so the carport, the footprint of the carport isn't gonna change at all?
It's not changing.
So that's already a non-conformance of the weekly?
Yes.
They okayed it?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and our zoning code does allow them to review, replace if necessary, and rebuild. So that's okay. They just, they can't increase the non, the size of it.
Okay.
If they were doing something like that, that would be included in the request.
And then I, I resubmitted a site plan mainly it was for addressing the driveway. Cause the driveway down there was in contention at one point between owners and I, I had a whole note on there that said that we were going to make a digger, but just need to get that cleared up, probably more from the association's standpoint and the city's, just so everybody had the same paper.
Questions for Dan from anybody? So I, Maddy?
Looks pretty straightforward.
I just, I don't see any impact on the community at all. It's buried back in there. Just doesn't really affect anybody, I don't think.
There was no, I didn't see any comments from neighbors. Was there? Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Philly Harrison, Will Beach Drive, their next door neighbor. My official name up here is Phil's brother. You may know him, Phil Harrison.
Right.
And I prefer Phil's brother than other things I've been calling. I've, I've known, I've been next door neighbor to him for more than 20 years. They're wonderful people. And I'm thrilled to see what they're doing. And I'm, I hope this can happen. The, the problem that they're having right now is finding a contract.
Exactly.
Which you just run into on note number C. So anyway, I'm, I'm all for it. Thank you.
One of them, continue to comment, we have approval from the Lebatons Landowners Association. What happens, our plans down there is that Shirley Snyder gets that we send them to her, they go out to Wee Wee's Board. And they're available for all the members of the association to come and in. So we pay particular attention to the direct neighbors and for their input to the house. But again, this, this is due by everybody down in the association that they choose to implement to. Another layer, a layer of, I hope we don't duplicate it.
Okay, we have a motion? I would make a motion that we approve as admitted.
Well, let's make sure that we address some of the key issues. Do you guys feel that there's sufficient information regarding practical difficulty? For profit?
Yeah.
Yes.
We should just kind of make sure that we note some of those in our motion.
Okay.
One thing that we have typically seen on some of these other weekly ones is, and this is a good example. The house does not line up with the lot, the existing home. It's, it's quite canted on the site. Not to, not to guide you, but that's something that we've noted before on some. So if that's part of your practical difficulty reason on, on this.
Well, as far as the practical difficulties, well, there's no other reasonable solution to add on as proposed within the layout of the home on the lot. It doesn't, and I don't remember all of it, the bullet item, but it certainly doesn't encumber either neighbor or the association, which has already given their approval. So it's not self-created. The building has existed there for how long? So based on those, I renew my motion to approve. I think that's enough.
Is noting the association's approval part of what we document when we do something like this?
I think in this case, it's, it's good to know that, that they have reviewed it and that they're in favor of it.
It's kind of like the neighbors approving, in a way, is the.
You know, a, a big part, one of the criteria in it is noting the effect it may have on neighbors.
Does it have adverse effects on any of the neighbors?
And, and I think that this alludes to that part of it. So we have a motion by Leo. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Maddy?
We'll do a roll call. Bob Thoma?
Yes.
Maddy Hines?
Yes.
Kathy Montal?
Yes.
Sue Stewart?
Yes.
John Leo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can start looking for a contract.
I have a couple lined up, but I'm not sharing any names.
Private staff.
Yeah, that's smart.
Okay, moving along to the Malcolm Cottage position. Everybody been down to see it, taking a look?
Yes, okay.
Questions from the Board?
Does anyone remember reviewing this last year? That was, were any of you on the zoning Board of Appeals last year when this came before the CBA?
I was not. I was on hiatus.
I don't remember.
This came in front of the CBA?
If that was, if I'm reading the letter correctly, at the June 9, 2021, Steve Harper Springs Zoning Board meeting.
So that's gonna be, that's, that's C. We're on B.
I'm sorry. No, it's okay. Borgman and Malcolm, not the same name.
I know my memory's gone, but.
It's not quite that far gone.
I hope not.
Not yet.
Want to read this to us?
Yeah, so 450 Main Street. So this one's a, a fairly similar request. Again, we're looking at a situation where they're just looking to add on a second-story addition on top of an existing first floor. So very similar in, in many ways. Couple of differences between the two sites. Previous one was in a single-family residential district. This is in an R2 district. So it does permit up to a duplex. And I think that this property may have in the past been used as a duplex. Might be good to find out from the owner if, if that's what's currently being used or will be used for in the future, or if it's been converted to a single-family. Just, just so that we understand all the ways that they're looking to use it. Other than that, I don't think that there's any more to add.
They are gonna use the home?
Well, that's, I would ask that question.
Or is it gonna go into the rental fleet?
That's, that's beyond our, our, our knowing or, or really, you know, if, if they choose to do something like that in the future. If they comply with zoning, you know, it is what it is.
It looks like a very similar situation. It's, it's the volume consideration, because it's just going vertical, right?
Yeah, that, that is correct. And to answer your question, Malcolm's, if it worked with them on a couple additions throughout here. It never indicated anything about renting. They're a lot of fun persons. I see they're act like I can't see people in there to do that, but it's a fair question. And this is the same thing too, is that we've looked at adding a couple more bedrooms. The house right now is it's, has like two, two and a partial bedroom, so they like to have two more bedrooms, families growing. And the best, again, aesthetics, obviously, were always gonna be important when I talk this. The, the equal size of each addition on the east and west just provides nice symmetrical design. A streetfront scape for Main Street, Harper Springs, which should have, so yeah, the, the area again is shown on the plan in the hatched areas. We're going up that second floor, so we need to request a vertical dimensional variance for the project.
How much was that? What was the, how much was the?
Encroachment?
Yes.
Six foot?
Six feet.
Yeah, we're like a six by fourteen area. We're six foot off the property line. So it's about, again, we have about six foot in some of the two rectangles base.
But the, the first floor encroachment already exists.
The first floor encroachment already exists.
And if you look at page C1, where it shows that top-down view, we can see the they've got one corner of the home that's a little bit behind this, that's only about one foot four inches from the property line. So it's very close. The front corner of the home is about three foot eight inches. And they are not coming out all the way to that with their second floor addition. That sits back another two, two feet or so beyond. So it will be a little bit farther away from the side yard than the existing first floor. Also, there's some great shots on page A3, which is, I think is the last page. They have pictures of the existing home. And you can see the, they've got a, a shot of each of the one-story additions facing Main Street on either side. And then they have the picture up above showing what it will look like with that second floor addition added on. Another sheet that I, I really like seeing, and I love it when, when they include this, page A2, which is the second to last sheet. The area that's highlighted in green is, especially on that north elevation. That portion all complies with zoning. So we're really only looking at that second floor that's outside of the red line on the right-hand side. That's the portion that doesn't comply, that they need a variance to be able to do.
And that elevation shows both the, the area that needs the variance and how it relates to the existing structure. So it's inside that. Yep.
So it's the.
I talked to both neighbors. Oh, so no problem.
Yeah, so it's the west side of the house that needs the variance.
That's correct.
Yep. Yeah, when looking at seat she won, or she won, when looking at sheet C1. The area that's in the solid green is the area that complies with zoning that they're, that they're adding. It's the area that has the, the dash lines there, or the hash lines. That's the area that doesn't comply that they're requesting the variance for.
So this is another one where you've got the angle of the house and the angle.
Very similar.
Yeah.
The practical difficulty in this particular situation would be that to not grant the variance would make them have a bedroom so small as to be almost unusable. It would be the size of closets.
And for the community, it would make it a lot uglier.
It'd be so.
No, we looked, even for adding on the first floor plan, I mean, we're right up against overages a lot coverage. It would make sense to make, take up more of the land and just keep running that number over. He doesn't like us.
You haven't gotten him worried enough.
He said, I'm so bored. If I listen to this one more, then I'll die.
Another comment on this, their lot coverage is 35%. So they're, they're approaching kind of maximum lot coverage. So by going up a second floor alleviates a variance request to go out and cover more lot area.
Yeah. I was challenged when it referred to a garage to actually figure out where the driveway was. It took several times around the block before I finally figured it out.
Yeah.
Just trying to get it all in my head. Yeah.
Yeah, they come in off of another street.
Yeah.
Well, that's why it's helpful to go out and.
Yeah.
Spend some time on the property.
Exactly.
Questions? Anybody? No? Anybody in the audience want a comments? Zip? No? Well, again, no going down the checklist. It's the positioning of the house on the lot. The, it's not self-created. It does not adversely affect the neighborhood or the neighbors.
Reasonable alternatives and other thought on there?
No, we just, we just highlighted it back, that there really isn't. I mean, expand the footprint and come back for a different kind of a variance. And this is overall a better solution.
Both for the homeowner and for the citizens.
And the first floor footprint is already there. So I think we're covered. Motion?
Move that we grant the variance for, what all the words do you need?
Second?
Second, John?
Well, based, based on.
You know, pick up the rest.
Did you make a note? Well, based on the findings of fact through our discussion?
Yes.
So we have a motion by Sue. Did we have a second, John? All right, roll call. Maddy Hines?
Yes.
Kathy Montal?
Yes.
Susan Stewart?
Yes.
John Leo?
Yes.
Bob Thoma?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you for a nice graphic.
Oh.
This just makes analyzing the, the request so. Wonderful. Doesn't leave much to the imagination.
I might understand that nobody is watching us tonight.
There is one person.
We have.
I'm Cargero. Cargero.
Item C?
Yep.
For you to pull up the, the. It's one of the packet from the GMA.
Thank you.
He got what he wanted.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jeff. Got what he wanted.
Kind of different reservation.
Hey, I could leave language. Uh, so item C?
Yes.
Yep. Now, this is, this is the request for an extension.
Yes.
Based on exactly the same request and variance approval as they had last year.
No changes, no. They're not asking to change. They, and they haven't submitted any new site plans. So 582 Elm, this was, they were adding a front, uh, they were modifying and enlarging a front porch, I think, to go more to the side. If, if you would like, we can, I can grab the packet.
What, what's the variance?
Uh, I don't, no, I think.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter, if they did, if they're not changing any of the requests or characteristics of the variance.
So this is one of those. This is one of those things that we questioned before, of the porches, and and I think that's probably gonna come to the planning commission too.
So is this a side yard, front yard, I mean, setback line issue, is that what this was?
So they, yeah, it it's a variant, it's a dimensional variance with proximity to the property line. And his uh, second to last sentence in the first paragraph, we requested a variance to construct a covered porch in addition to our residence. As well as enlarge an existing porch stoop. Um, and I believe this is one, I think. Uh, it it might be on a corner lot.
Well, it does say, they they request, it's located approximately thirteen and a half feet from the corner side yard line, so it is a corner.
And eight feet from the front, yeah, and there was the driveway in the garage that sat behind the home.
Okay, and wasn't there a big tree on the corner? And trees in the backyard, so there was. Am I remembering the right one?
So when I was remembering, it's a corner, it was a corner lot.
Yeah, we can pull up the aerial photo online. So we can look at it there.
Yeah. Elm Street, Elm and Maple.
Oh, okay, I think I know where else.
I remember, I can remember this one.
I believe the the area that we're talking about is enlarging a porch in in this area, and it was coming over the side or. Whatnot in there. And coming out a little bit here.
Right.
And then this, and then this is a garage at the back. Yep.
Is that a pretty big lot, or am I looking at, oh, there's another house right next to it?
Yep, so we've got a property line probably right in here along this tree line.
Got it.
We have back line right here. Uh, so they do have this area over here. But they also have, remember, corner lots have essentially two front yard setbacks. Right, they have a a front yard setback, and then they have a corner side yard, which is the same size. So even though it looks like they have quite a bit of room here, some of that is road right of way, and then a lot of that then is that. Front yard setback and corner side yard setback, so even though their lot may look a little bit larger, they have larger setbacks.
That's why we're getting off the rails here, we're not here to vote.
No, I know I am.
I think it was just re familiarizing people, especially some. An extension, right, and I just.
This has been done already.
But I think it was just to re familiarize people that were here when we voted on it before with what property it was, but then also we have a couple new members that.
That you gave for one second, yes.
Oh, yeah, no.
What's, under what circumstances would you not want to grant an extension, I guess?
I think, I think my answer to that would be, I think, a couple things, right, so one. Um, would be if we feel that the situation has changed from then to now, right? If if something else had happened in that area, if there was a lot of other new construction, and the surroundings have changed. Then we may want to say, we feel we need to reevaluate and hold another hearing to discuss practical difficulty, or. If they had done other work on the site to modify their property in some other way that complied with zoning. But hadn't started this project, that might be another situation where we would want to reevaluate and say, we need to have. A new discussion about whether you have a practical difficulty or reasonable alternatives. Um, I don't believe that either of those things have happened in this situation. I don't, um, I don't see a problem with allowing them an extension, we have done so before for other properties.
Well, without knowing, without having a chance to look at it, I can't.
Well, part of the job is to ask questions, if you're comfortable, I mean, you get a vote on it, so.
Well, that's, and I, in not knowing the address, I know you mentioned it, but I didn't know that. So I didn't have a chance to go by it.
And I think he's actually indicated in here, we we received this email back on June eighth. And it just wasn't, I wasn't able to include it in the information for last month. And actually, they note in here that they plan on starting their project sometime in July, so I think it's going to be started very soon.
Yeah, I think so, too, yeah.
It's just because of the timing, they're they're appropriately asking for the extension.
Yeah.
I I suspect that we'll see more of these, as as people find it more and more impossible to get work done.
It may be, maybe the case.
Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I'm making a motion that we accept the extension for Elm Street.
We give them a year?
We give, yes, so they have one year for an initial, and then the extension is from another, for another year.
One year, a one year extension from the original.
No, from today, right?
From today or from?
From when it expired.
From when it expired.
From when it expired.
When it expires.
Second?
Second.
Second? Call the roll, please.
Absolutely, we'll start with Sue this time.
Yes.
John Leo.
Yes.
Um, Bob Pho.
Yes.
Maddie Heitz?
Yes.
Kathy Montjo?
Yes.
Motion passes. Comments?
I would like you to entertain a.
So.
From some. Somebody who sells ice cream or.
Yeah.
So that we can say, we do this, we give us ice cream.
Some place that does marker readers would be nice.
Oh, well, that would.
Before we end the meeting, if you don't mind, um, the planning commission. Is about to start a process of reviewing the zoning code, we finished a master plan review. We're going to jump into reviewing the zoning code, making some changes to make sure that the zoning code aligns with the master plan. They have some thoughts and ideas of ways to modify that improvement. Um, we have, in the past, occasionally, found items that we felt needed to be addressed in the zoning code. So that we didn't have to grant variances for them, and a good example is a couple of years ago, we had a couple of requests for. Handicap ramps that were going to extend into the setback. And we felt that that was maybe, that there was a way to do that in the code without requiring a variance. So you guys requested that we make that recommendation to planning commission. We took that to planning commission and they did adopt then some language to allow for some special, you know, considerations for handicap ramps. So I guess my 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 question for you today is. Uh, you don't even have to have an answer for me now, if you wanna come back at another meeting or email me, but if you guys have any thoughts. Of ideas or things that you would like to see the planning commission look at and maybe address. Uh, in their zoning code review. Um, we can make some recommendations to them. Uh, of things that, you know, that you have that. That you feel might be appropriate changes to the zoning code, and then they can, throughout their process, include your thoughts and comments in that. So.
I have one for you right now. When people come in and ask to expand their porch. And whatever, and have a roof is fine, but not to have it enclosed. They have to.
Or when they come in for a variance, or. Okay, that would still be something that we would handle here.
Oh, okay.
So the thought would be, if if there's things that you think that they could modify, like if you think that our setbacks are too large. You could make a comment and say, you know, we would be for smaller sized setbacks. Or if you, if you have any types of things where the zoning code says it should be done one way. And you feel that 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 could be updated to better reflect the current community.
These two cases today could be examples.
This, this is a good example, actually, if, we we've talked about it before, about whether or not it's needed. For people to come in for a variance request when they already have an existing first floor, and they're just talking about adding a second floor. Do, um, before when we talked about it.
Otherwise comply.
Other, yes, yeah, so before when we talked about that, we felt that it was still appropriate for them to come into the Z B A to have that discussion. Uh, sometimes there could be a neighbor that might be, uh, you know. Quite concerned about the proximity to a property line or something. If that, that could be a potential.
Street is a perfect example.
The what?
This one on Main Street that we just voted on is a perfect example, the people on that side. Could have said, whoa, hold it, but didn't.
Correct, so if that's something that you feel is something that we could change in the code. So that we don't have to have a variance request for a situation like that, that could be a a suggestion to the planning commission. If you, I'm not trying to tell you.
No, it's an opportunity that we should think about.
Thanks, and if there could be, you know, if it's something that the zoning code doesn't address, or something that you think the zoning code.
I'm all for streamlining the system, but there has to be some control.
Yeah.
Can't just say, okay, fine.
And that's, and that, that question is exactly this, where do you draw the line?
Well, and, and how do we do with the control, does it have to be us, can it be him?
Well, yeah, I mean, and, I mean, for example, these two requests, it's not like they were held up, well. A month, I'm guessing at the worst, right? These must have come, if they came in just like right after the last meeting. Right, so the, so, I mean, in terms of streamlining.
It's not a hardship for them to come in and just tell us.
That's what I'm asking, you know? I mean, thirty days doesn't seem.
It's not too bad, I don't think, I mean, I mean, yes, you know, if somebody wants to start something. Real quick, then it can be troublesome, but I think, I I don't think it's too irresponsible to tell somebody that they need to prepare better.
We plan for many urgent issues, oh my god, you gotta do this now because.
I'm ready to break ground. Well, and and truly, if somebody came in and said that, I I don't think that that's our worry.
It's not a reason to do it.
Well, and I, but as a person from a, from a business standpoint, you know. Nobody wants to sit down and wait and, you know, I mean, it's like, if we can get it done, let's get it done. You know, so I appreciate that. That can be an urgency, so if we can streamline it, but, I mean, like I said, if we're doing it in thirty days, I don't see that as a big.
So, and I'm kinda commenting on. Part of the time issue in this community revolves around. Weakly in the point, and their bylaws and insistence that all construction work. Be either finished or stopped by the fourth of July, and so a significant part of the spring is eaten up. By two communities while the rest wait. And when the contractor calls and says, I can start next week, there's panic.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, we're not, we're not a normal community.
No, that's, yeah. That's true, when I, yeah. Was asking people about work on my house, it was like, oh, you know, oh, well, it was like September, it was like, well.
September, this year or next year? Or we can start July fifth.
Yeah, the day after they're kicked out. And so now we're commenting, this is where a kind of a historical perspective, a listing of all the variances that have been requested. Over time would be really helpful. Because sitting, sitting and trying to remember, I mean, I.
Right, it'd be nice to know, is there a certain kind of variance that we're asked about all the time and that generally gets approved and doesn't?
Right.
We could certainly put together a list of. Uh, we can look at the history of what we have that's easily available and and easily put something together for that.
Okay, that'd be interesting to know about.
Absolutely.
What the Z B A has said yes on and what it said no on.
That depends on who the members were.
Yeah, and I know there's, I know that's hard.
That's, that's just.
Yeah.
In response to your question about us. I I I think that you're you're driving the bus, you know better than we. What's nonsensical, what's eating up time, you know what I'm saying? I, we would, I would like to hear your input on what we should or shouldn't, because you're the guy that's. That gets it first and has to arrange this, yada, yada.
It's, yeah, it's a, it's a, I think it's a hard line. That I try and follow, right, because I I wanna provide you with sufficient information to be able to make an educated decision on it. But I don't wanna cross the line where you feel like I'm starting to tell you how you should be deciding. Uh, obviously, you you know, and and if I do, you guys can. Tell me where to go, but, um, so that's, that's my goal, is to, I don't wanna be the one driving the bus, I think that you guys are the one driving the bus. But I think I'm the one telling you how much fuel you have, right, and where the lane is, right, we need to stay in the lane, but but you guys have the destination and control that. And I think that's maybe a slight better.
To that point, right.
Yeah.
I'm suggesting that you would be the person to know how to head it off, i- if it should be.
What's your role gonna be in in working with the planning commission on? Revisiting the zoning code, do you have ideas and recommendations for them?
Oh, we do, so, you know, Victor and I have been looking at it, you know, frequently, um, with various things. Um, we are at all of the planning commission meetings. So we're neck deep in this. Um, we have a lot of suggestions of our own, we're getting suggestions from the planning commission members themselves about. Areas that they know that we need to focus on, uh, but we're going to review, I believe, the whole thing, start to finish. Um, some sections may get a lot more of attention than others. Um, some, you know, some of the sections where we get into maybe some of the legalese, maybe that doesn't need to change much, because it's it's still pretty good, but. When we get into other areas, we may have more ideas of things that we want to change and update.
And does the new planning consultant get involved?
Yep.
Yeah.
So, and and if any of you would like to attend.
He'll be the guide.
Yeah, oh, he's, he's gonna be the guide for that. So, and for any of you that are interested, next Thursday. Um, John Ico Angeli is our planning consultant that works with the planning commission. Um, and for any of you that were able to attend, we had that training session, he he held that, it was great. Um, but he will be at the, um, at this month's planning commission meeting, providing our outline and timeframe. Of how we will be going through that zoning code review. Right, that will be one of the things we discuss at the planning commission, kind of preparing that outline of what our process will be. What we'll be getting into, um, you know, not really the details of specifically, you know, each thing. Um, that'll be for when we get to those sections, but providing us that outline and timeframe will be a part of our discussion.
As the zoning administrator, do you have input forum for this next meeting, that some things that you'd like to see changed?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep, about half a page, various things, yes, I've got a few items, some of them.
You're the, you're the, you're driving the bus.
Yeah, some of them are miniscule, like we just have some wording changes or or spelling things, a few. Little things, but then others, some of the other things are bigger things, um, some of them are quite big. That are, that may take up a lot of time, but it's things that I think we need to do to modernize our zoning code in some ways. Not necessarily to change things, I don't want people to get scared that we're making dramatic changes to our zoning code, but just. Changing some wording and modernizing them in ways that still work with the current community. Right?
I wanna just go back to, really quickly to Sue and John's point about sort of creating some sort of. Decision booklet, right, so when I was in Milton, Vermont, I did something similar, I created a unofficial case law for for the town, for the zoning board there, and right, so you had a. List of all the past decisions. They, one second summary of what it was about, um, what was the, the decision was and what the reason was. Um, it's a lot of work to get that going, but once they had.
Once you start.
It's it's kind of provided like, all right, we're reviewing the case, you're like, and here's how we ruled. On previous cases, and here's what's different about this, uh, you don't have to use that previous guidance, but here's what, you know, we've done.
It's like real case law, you turn it back to the scene, and then write some consistency and might address some concerns that other people have about. Why you make decisions for.
So it was a good tool, um, but there's, there's work, work, you wanna put a date on how far back you wanna go, so you're not going back to the nineteen. Seventies and eighties, you know. Right, and you can, I mean, it could be one, you know, a small start on it this year and add to it in future years, like, but I do think it would help. You know, when we get people who show up and say, oh, you're doing that for them because they're friends and family. You know, there are better reasons than that, and if we could express what those reasons are, it would be nice. So I guess, to someone, just your thoughts, just, you know, you have my pick on the air.
Yeah, if any of you have any thoughts about things that you'd like to see.
Now, this, this is gonna take a while, this is not a.
Right, this.
At least nine months, probably a year.
Yeah.
So we have some time, but if, I think we could have some very interesting discussions once we begin to see history. history about what might pop.
Yeah. And I, and I think I've recommended, at, at some point through this process, it might be good to have a joint meeting of the, of the Z B A and the planning commission all together.
Not during summer fundraising party season.
So, you sure? For July weekend, it would be a great.
Get me out of a few of those.
All right.
All right, Bob, it's yours to adjourn.
Yours to adjourn. Unless anybody has any?
Any other thoughts, it'll be adjourned.
Second?
All favor?
Hi.